The League of Women Voters is a national nonpartisan organization formed to encourage citizen participation in government. It never supports or opposes any political party or candidate. The statements and opinions of the candidates are presented solely in the interest of public service and in no way are to be construed as an endorsement thereof by the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters takes no responsibility for the views or facts stated by the candidates. The audio or video from the forum may not be used in or for commercial advertising. This presentation is copyrighted by the League of Women Voters. All rights are reserved. This video may only be shown in its entirety.
Welcome to this forum for the City of Rochester Hills City Council election. Today is Wednesday, September 24th, 2025. This forum will feature two candidates for Member-at-Large, you vote for one, and two candidates running for the First District in Rochester, you also vote for one. These are four-year terms. The remaining candidates are running unopposed. The Legal Women Voters Oakland area is the sponsor for this forum. My name is Howard Barron. I am a member of the Legal Women Voters. I am not a resident in this area. The Legal Women Voters is a trusted national nonpartisan political organization. Our members do hands-on work to safeguard democracy. We will never endorse a candidate. We will directly be directly involved in shaping important issues that keep our community strong. As a member of the League of Women Voters, I have the opportunity to contribute in a leadership role such as this one that has great impact on local, state, and even national issues. If you're interested in learning more about how to become, how you can make a similar impact, I encourage you to visit our website at L W V O A Legal Women Voters Oakland Area dot org. The Legal Women Voters does not endorse any candidate or political party. Views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, and the sponsors take no responsibility for that. The forum, the format of this forum has been established by the Legal Women Voters. We please ask the audience to remain silent during the forum. Please turn off all your mobile devices and cell phones. We ask that candidates answer the questions with their views only and do not interrupt another candidate. The questions will be asked of all candidates and will not single out any one particular candidate. This presentation is copyrighted 2025 by the Legal Women Voters. All rights are reserved. Candidates will be answering questions submitted by the audience and screen for duplication and appropriateness by Colleen Murphy and Cindy Peltston. Our pages for tonight, Lisa Cooney, Susanna Woolison, and Jamie Ellis Teknachi will be circulating with note cards and pencils for your questions. After you've written your questions, please return your cards to the pages. Please use one card for each question, and you can just raise your hand, and the pages will come to you to pick up your questions or to give you additional blank cards. The format will be as follows. All candidates will be given one minute for opening statements. Closing statements will be given in one, in, for one minute also in reverse order. Candidates will each have one minute to answer each question in rotation unless extended by me, the moderator. All candidates will be allowed equal time to answer questions. Our timer this evening is Ginny Abbott. The candidates will be shown a 15-second sign to wrap up your thoughts, and then a stop sign will be shown when the time has expired. The candidates for this evening are for Member-at-Large Ben Galloway and Mark Skelsey, and for the First District Max Donovan and Diana Manino. We will begin with opening statements from Mr. Galloway.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. I'm very excited to be speaking with all of you here at this forum. I very much believe in what we as a panel can bring to this community. I think we all have very diverse views, and we all have beliefs and ideologies in how we think we can best help our community individually. My background in management and construction management, here this last week, we pretty much, the entire evening was spent talking about the infrastructure and the building and development of our community and roadworks and infrastructure. And, you know, this is a field that I come out of, and this is what I would like to bring to our community, and I'm very excited to bring that. Having worked here in the community on the fire department for the better part of eight years, giving back to the community is what I take very much pride in. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Skelsey.
Hello. My name is Mark Skelsey, and, oh. Okay, I got it now. Hello, my name is Mark Skelsey, and I've been a resident of Rochester Hills with my wife and three children for 22 years plus. I'm a retired science teacher from the Chippewa Valley School District. I'm also a small business owner, which we do a lot of our work actually in this area. We've worked with a lot of charities. The question that is always asked of me is, why did you decide to run for this position? And honestly, it was just off of a phone call. Somebody called me and said, hey, no one has applied or no one has put their paperwork in for this position at the time. And I thought this was a great opportunity for me to give back to the community. I'm a very big believer that when a community takes care of you, you should return the favor yourself. And so that's why I decided to do this. One of the main reasons we decided to move out in this way is the green spaces. And, oh, I hit the stop sign on the time. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Donovan.
Hello, my name is Max Donovan. I am a social worker, peer support specialist specifically at Easter Seals Mork and right here in Rochester Hills at Hope 365. Working two jobs to live here is something not unfamiliar to a lot of the folks who do. I have a bachelor's degree in political science from Michigan State University with a minor in economics. I am married to a wonderful wife who actually works in the village of Rochester Hills, right in our district. I came to Rochester Hills in 2020 after becoming homeless in Lansing for a little while. The city opened its arms to me, and being a great big politics dork, the first thing I did when I found a place to stay was I looked at, you know, who represents us? Where are the votes going? What, where does my vote matter the most? And I found that we had gone 16 years without another name on the ballot. I looked for four years to find someone to run, and I couldn't find someone. So I decided to be the change I wanted to see in the world. I have some ideas I'm excited to talk about. Thank you.
Ms. Manino.
Yes, good evening to everybody, and thank you for attending. My name is Diana Manino, and I'm running for City Council because I love living in Rochester Hills, and I want to keep it a premier place to live. In order to do that, we need to have qualified people on City Council that can work with the local government to make the best decisions. I'm a former automotive executive. I have 30 years primarily in finance and strategic management. The last seven years of my career, I was a North American president of an automotive supplier. It is my intent to bring that valuable experience into the city of Rochester Hills to work on my top three priorities, which would be number one, efficient and effective public services; number two, strong financial responsibility; and number three, well-balanced new development. I am a longtime resident in the city. I'm married to my husband, Joe. Together, we have five kids and five grandkids, and I look forward to the dialogue with everyone tonight. Thank you.
We will now begin the question segment of our forum. Most questions will have one-minute time limit. We will begin with Mr. Galloway. Please discuss your plans or ideas to attract businesses and jobs to the city.
Well, as most everyone that lives here knows, Rochester Hills is a fantastic community, and we are, our doors are wide open. We've had fantastic leadership in the past, and they are always on the look for bringing new business, new business leadership, and tax base to our community. My world is that of development and construction management. Reaching out to those industries and bringing in new business, new development, new construction, new infrastructure to the city is something that I do each and every day. I look forward to bringing that kind of leadership to City Council if elected. Thank you.
Mr. Skelsey.
Could you repeat the, oh. Could you repeat the question again?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Please discuss your ideas or plans to attract business and jobs to the city.
You know, one of the things that I noticed working with the city every time I've had to come into City Hall is that they're very welcoming, and I think having the open attitude when a business wants to come into our area is extremely important, that they feel welcomed and that through, you know, zoning and just working with the city itself, that it's easy to do. I mean, no business wants to be challenged when they want to give to a community. They want to be welcomed with open arms. So I think having the proper attitude with a business is the best way to do it.
Mr. Donovan.
Yeah, so I think first and foremost, this is a place where our mayor has done a really good job. We've had the mayor's office and his staff here reach out to business places. The village is always full. I think we have, I think it was 97% occupancy rate in our business spaces. They're doing a good job here. It's not somewhere we should be putting a lot of our effort as long as they're, as long as they're here. We should focus on keeping them here. With that said, if we want new businesses to come in, they're not going to come in into an environment of uncertainty. They're not going to come in if they don't know how people get treated. And uncertainty is created when workers don't know what they're getting paid. Our firefighters went eight months without a contract. The nurses at Henry Ford are now in their fourth year without one. It creates a kind of uncertainty that is unfriendly to business. No business will want to move here when they see people striking on the street. We need to solve those problems to make us less scary for businesses to come. Thank you.
Ms. Manino.
Yes, well, Rochester Hills is a desirable location, and there's a lot of businesses that do want to come in here. I think that that's pretty evident. I think it's important that we have a environment that attracts business in terms of the zoning, the permitting, and how difficult it is to come into Rochester Hills and put in a business. The developers need to have a sense that they're working with City Council, they're working with the mayor's office, they're working with planning, planning and economic development committee, which I do think that the city does a good job. It's also important that the city have the proper incentive packages. I think that that's for employers coming in, that's something that they're looking for, and it's incumbent upon the City Council, working in conjunction with the planning and development committee, to make those packages attractive to developers. And moreover, we want to attract the business, the high-tech, light industrial manufacturing type of businesses that do employ a lot of people for the city. Thank you.
This next question, we'll start with Mr. Skelsey. Do you support organized labor, and do you stand in solidarity with the O P E I U 40 at the Henry Ford Hospital in Rochester who are fighting for safe staffing ratios and fair wages?
As I said before, I was a school teacher for over 30 years, and I was our union, our in-house union rep for at least, out of those 30 years, 15 of them. I am a strong union supporter. I think that our country was built off the union. It allows workers to have, you know, good living wages, which everybody wants. And when you have somebody that's making a good wage with health care and they're supported by their employer, you have a happy employee. And so, yes, I think unions are important in that aspect, and I would support the nurses. I do support the nurses 110%.
Mr. Donovan.
Yes, I stand in solidarity with the nurses and any other union worker in Rochester Hills. The people who work in Rochester Hills should be able to afford to live in Rochester Hills. But setting aside the union issue, right? When they came here asking for a resolution, they weren't talking about pay raises, they weren't talking about vacation days, they were talking about a safe staffing matrix, that is a guarantee that there will be a certain number of nurses for each patient. City Council said they don't get involved in private affairs, but it stops being a private affair when it starts threatening the public health. It stops being a private affair when our ambulances show up to an understaffed ER. It stops being a private affair when our citizens spend hours in the hospital in pain because one nurse has to care for 14, 15, 16 patients. We are not choosing between a union and a hospital. We are choosing between patients and preventable harm. This election's a chance to make the right choice. Thanks.
Ms. Manino.
Well, first off, I want to say that I do support the nurses. I actually, after the last City Council meeting, had a direct conversation with some of the union reps, and I, it's a complex discussion, right? And we're talking about private companies and private entities that have nothing to do with the city of Rochester Hills. And while I back the nurses, I hope they can come to a good resolution. I do believe that that is out of the scope and out of the purview of local city government. Once we go down that road and try to intervene with private companies, that's a slippery slope. That's a slippery slope, and I don't believe that that's something that the City Council should be getting involved with. Although I do support them personally, that's something that I would be a no on as well. I think the City Council and the mayor are giving the correct answer. It's a private company, private discussion, and there's a separation between privacy and the government. That's my answer.
Mr. Galloway.
First and foremost, I 100% absolutely support the nurses. I actually grew up as a young man making picket signs for my mother, who was a national spokesperson for Teamsters. I've been to any number of hospitals as they were trying to unionize, let alone enforce the, the policies and the contracts. That being said, I was also a member of the union when I was on the fire department. I grew up as a young man coming up through the trades and with any number of unions as a carpenter, as a laborer, and everything in between. That being said, at the City Council level, as we sit here at the chamber, I also believe, as City Council mentioned here in this last meeting, that there is a separation between City Council and the private business. But that being said, I 100% do support the nurses. Thank you.
Next question, we'll start with Mr. Donovan. Do you support charging residents a fee to park at city parks?
Absolutely not. I'm sympathetic to the idea that we've made an incredible park in Innovation Hills, and we're probably going to make another one in Noiki Park, and that people from all around the state are coming to enjoy it. And it makes sense that that's causing extra wear and tear that those folks should cover, and parking is a good way to do that. But we already paid for that park. Our taxes already did that. Our additional millages already did that. If we get a parking ticket for parking at a park we paid for, we should be able to come down to the city clerk's office and get that ticket waived. I don't think that's a big ask. Now, they do offer parking passes for, I forget the exact number, forgive me, I think it's around $30, $40. But it's, it's inexcusable to expect us to pay three times in our property taxes, and then again in our property taxes and mileage, and then again to pay for the parking itself. The City Council made a great park, and they failed to anticipate the demand for that park, and they're trying to shove the responsibility for that mistake onto our shoulders. Let's not let them do that. Thank you.
Ms. Manino.
Yes, I do not support park fees for residents. I think I'm in agreement with Max. We've already paid for the park and the taxes, we continue to pay property taxes. I am for charging non-resident usage of the park. The parks are fantastic. They cost a lot of money, and they cost a lot of maintenance, and I think it's fair to ask that non-citizens contribute to the upkeep of the park. Actually, the new park going in, the Noiki Park, there was a meeting at City Council a couple of weeks ago, that's going to include a pretty major renovation for a dog park that even, in my mind, would even need to have extra fees on top of the normal fee for out-of-resident people bringing their dogs in. So that's my answer. One thing that I'll just make a comment, in talking and walking around, that's one of the top issues that people talk about. Everybody's mad about paying fees at Innovation Hills. So I'll leave you with that.
Mr. Galloway.
I will actually echo that. That seems to be probably one of the number-one topics that gets asked to me as I'm going around, up to and including from my wife. I also believe that as a resident who pays taxes here in the city, who, that our citizens of the city should have that park fee waived. Now, that being said, we also, I also believe that Rochester Hills is a gem amongst cities all across the state of Michigan. The amount of work that's gone into bringing outside traffic here, whether it's from kayaking or to our parks, we, Rochester Hills has become a destination. We have a very clean balance sheet. I think that we should be giving back to the citizens who live here and reside here, and we can then pay, get that paid for by those who are coming in from outside sources. Thank you.
Mr. Skelsey.
I think all four of us are in agreement on this. I really agree with Diana's idea of not charging the residents of Rochester Hills, but charging non-residents some kind of fee to allow them to use the park. Now, Innovation Park is really an incredible park. They took an area that was really a disaster area, and they turned it into something amazing. So, and I think that's one of the reasons people come to Rochester Hills, is for the green spaces, and we need to take care of those green spaces, and we need to be careful when we are allowing development to come into the city. We need it, but we also need to protect why people moved to this area.
The next question, we'll start with Ms. Manino. What is your stance regarding the possibility of an AI data center being built in Rochester Hills and all of the issues of noise, water use, power use, light pollution, and power plant exhaust?
I'm not sure if that's really being considered or not, or it's a theoretical question, but maybe referring back to my answer I gave on new business, I am for high-tech businesses coming into Rochester Hills. Let me be clear on that. I definitely would want an AI data center, but this is something that would have to be vetted out through the planning and economic development committees. I know that there's a very rigorous process in terms of addressing all of those issues that were brought up in the question, you know, the water usage, the power requirements, the light pollution, those things. As long as the criterion was met for the zoning, that that's something that, yes, I would be in favor for, because I do think that that's the future, and that's something that we should be looking, those types of businesses in Rochester Hills.
Mr. Galloway.
Don't know that I could. Don't know that I could have said it better myself. I agree that Rochester Hills, we are a beacon of business, and we're doing everything in our power to bring business to our city. I agree that I don't know that that's something that's even in the forecast. However, as a builder, as a developer, something along those lines, something that would take years to look through and make, you know, ordinances and the zoning and whatnot, and I think in today's day and age, there are any number of rigorous hoops that have to be jumped through before a project like that would ever come to fruition, up to and including making sure that the city can facilitate the water needs, the electrical needs, and obviously emissions. I mean, the, the main reason, I think, most of us live here in Rochester Hills is because it's a beautiful city. It's not a concrete jungle, and I believe the lion's share of all of us want to keep it that way. Thank you.
Mr. Skelsey.
When I hear something like that, all I think about is, okay, how is it going to infect the environment, and what exactly is going to happen? And it's not something that could be brushed into. I mean, I would like to see some kind of environmental studies done on this, which I'm sure they would do, but in the long run, it's, again, encroaching onto this space in Rochester Hills where people moved here for the greenery and the trails and the wildlife. So when I hear something like that, it makes me nervous, I'll be honest. Is development and businesses coming into the city important? Yes. But is it worth it at the cost of affecting why people want to move here with their families?
Mr. Donovan.
So I have promised to hear any proposal for development on its merits and not to say yes or no outright. I think it's important to hear both sides of something like that before you come to a decision. With that said, an AI data center is going to have a really uphill battle with me. I, I think our power bills are high enough without inviting one of the most power-hungry kinds of building to our city. I'm not interested in facilitating the theft of art, of IP, or of jobs that AI represents. I, I think that I would need to hear a really, really convincing case that this data center would do something positive and productive for our community that would make it worth the cost to society of having it. In addition to that, since I have a little more time left than I expected, I would like to echo the environmental concerns of my, of my friend Mark here. Every acre of green space we lose is another deer in our headlights, and I am not interested in letting a data center do that to us. Thank you.
Next question, we'll start with Mr. Galloway again. And on the environmental frontier, the questioner's primary concern is environmental, in the environment specifically, green renewable energy. What ideas or policies would you support to advance renewable energy in Rochester Hills?
I, as a developer, am very much into and believe in all the various, and there is a variety of renewable usable energies, whether it be solar, wind, geothermal. I think these are all areas that all new construction should be looking at as they come into a community. Moreover, how can we, as a city, take advantage of some of these? I've been part of projects where we have these kind of renewable energy programs, and it's incredible how well camouflaged a lot of this can be when we have unproductive space that could be utilized for putting electricity back into the grid and doing it such a fashion that it can lower energy expenses or it can help power facilities like this. I believe it's something that the city, the city should be looking into heavily, and it's something that we should require of pretty much any and all new development coming into the city. Thank you.
Mr. Skelsey.
Yeah, I agree with Ben. I mean, it's a great idea, but we don't want it to be intrusive either. I mean, would you want a giant windmill in the middle of the city when we could use solar panels for the same amount of energy? I know that downtown Rochester at one time had a restaurant that used geothermal energy when they were here. It's, we have to think of something better, and I think the city of Rochester Hills could be the example that other cities could come to and watch. I mean, we, we are within a certain area. We only have so much acreage, but if we can build it correctly and place it correctly, so when you look out your, off your back deck, you're not looking at, you know, a, a windmill or a giant solar panel, if it can be put somewhere effectively, yes, definitely. I'm all for it.
Mr. Donovan.
Well, I have great news. I, I don't just have ideas, I've actually implemented them before. I've been there and done the thing. When I was part of the MSU student government, I was part of the committees that helped to bring a project to MSU. A company called Innovatius worked with us. Their business model is that they build solar, they build carports, covered parking on publicly-owned spaces, and build solar panels on top of that, and they don't charge a dime for it. The way they make their money back is they contract with the city to sell the energy that they produce from that at the current market rate for 20 years, shielding us from any rate hikes that DTE wants to put on us. They've raised rates on us four times in the last three years and are angling for a fifth. We made that happen in MSU. We can make it happen here at City Hall, in our schools, and in some of our business areas. Partnership costs us nothing, it will save Partnership costs us nothing, it will save us money, and we'll get a cleaner, greener city for it. Thanks.
Ms. Menino.
Yes, just, just as a general statement, my position is, yes, we absolutely, where we can, need to look at sustainable energy, whether that be solar powers. I would say not, not windmills, but other forms of alternative energy that are more green than what we have today. But from my perspective, sitting on city council, this is something that I would need to see very clear and convincing evidence that there's a business case to do it. Right? A lot of times, and I've been involved with installing solar panels on factory roofs and installing them here, and they're sold is this great business case. And when you really come down to the payback, there is no payback on it. The investment is very high, it's payback over 20, 30 years. And, and in the end, we ended up using, having to use the electricity because the solar power couldn't produce enough energy for the need. So yes, the answer is yes, I do like it, but I'm skeptical and I would want to see a firm business case with a payback before I would approve anything.
We'll start with Mr. Skelsey on the next question. The Rochester Hills operating budget is over $200 million. What experience or skill do you have to ensure the city runs efficiently?
Well, at home, my wife balances the checkbook, so. I think when it comes to something like that, that's a huge budget. And I would definitely be relying on my city council partners to help me through that, especially for the first year. I mean, that is an enormous amount of money and we have a great surplus. We have a, you know, and to manage it, I, I think you would have to be careful again with the projects that you're putting out there. So again, do I have experience with that amount of money? I'll be honest with you, I don't. But I am willing to learn how that whole finance situation works.
Mr. Donovan.
I think I might be the only person up here who actually has experience doing this. Again, at MSU, it sounds very silly to use student council as a, as an answer here, but every undergraduate student who goes to MSU pays an extra $18 in tuition as a tax, and that goes to us. So we had an operating budget of around $2 million. And I was made chair of the finance committee in my very first year. I was elected to it twice, which meant I was responsible for making and implementing that budget. I'm very pleased to say that I was able to put, to create two surplus budgets in a row that got implemented smoothly and created new programs to help support survivors of sexual assault while doing it. It doesn't, I think everybody up here is really good at budgeting. I think I am one of them, but I am the only one, as far as I know, with a record of doing it at a government level. And I'd love to take that experience to council with me. Thanks so much.
Ms. Menino.
Yes, so to answer that question, I go back to my opening statement. As I mentioned, I was a former automotive executive for 30 years. I've spent the majority of my career in finance. I was a chief financial officer for many years for joint ventures. When I was president, we had seven manufacturing locations, 1,000 employees. I was controlling a budget of over half a billion dollars easily. I've done it for many years. I have a lot of experience doing that. I also have a lot of experience in, I would say, the technical aspects of this job as city council, understanding contracts, purchase authorizations, understanding and reading financial statements. I'm very strong in that. This is something that I would bring to Congress, Congress. Getting ahead of myself here to city council.
Mr. Galloway.
Well, if we were to sit there and tear apart the budget for the city, the vast majority of those dollars go to our building department and the construction and development and things that, projects that go on in the city. This is particularly a world I come out of. All the projects that I currently manage range from that 50 to $200 million range. And I continuously and I work thoroughly with HUD and with MISTDA and various governmental programs and keeping and maintaining and keep an eye on every penny that gets spent on all my project is my day-to-day. Where our city puts its dollars, how those dollars get utilized, how we can most efficiently use those dollars. For example, the conversation that we just had here recently with regards to a road repair. Understanding how those dollars are being used specifically from the people sitting across from us over here and when they're making the request for additional funds, having that kind of knowledge I bring to the table is something I think will be of value to the city council. Thank you.
The next question, we'll start with Mr. Donovan. Are you impacted by any of the reservoir expenses paid by your HOA? And what would you change as far as who should absorb those expenses?
I think I'm going to use the three most important words a politician can here. I don't know. I'm a renter. I, I don't own my home, so I, I don't, I'm not allowed in my HOA meetings. I certainly don't have voting power there. But I do know that a lot of HOAs in our city are in trouble. Our HOA in particular, our property management company, has neglected to repair air conditioning in all three of our buildings for the last three years now. So I, I don't know the answer to your question. I, I wish I did. I apologize. But I, I will say that one of the things I am hoping to do is perform an ethics audit of property management companies here in Rochester Hills to make sure that every citizen is getting what they deserve out of their HOA.
Ms. Menino.
Do you mind quickly repeating the question? I just want to make sure I understand it.
Absolutely. Are you impacted by any of the, any of the reservoir expenses paid by your HOA? And what would you change as far as who should absorb these expenses?
Talking about me personally, is, I mean, I have an HOA. I would say, not that I'm aware of for our HOA, but I know specifically the HOA in the subdivision next to us is impacted. There's a reservoir they just put in. I don't feel it works. There's a lot of discussion on that. Every time it rains, it floods. I think a lot of the homeowners are dealing with the management of the stormwater retention in these reservoirs that are putting in the HOAs. This is something that if I'm on city council, I definitely want to look into the responsibilities between city government and the infrastructure maintenance and what are the HOAs paying for. We need to go back into the legal documents, look at the de-restrictions for the city, and we need to understand, and for those HOAs that are experiencing detrimental flooding, this is something that we absolutely need to take up for the citizens.
Mr. Galloway.
An area that I'm intimately involved in, as one of the state of Michigan's licensed stormwater operators and someone who deals with these detention ponds and reservoirs on every one of my projects, the management of it and the expenses that can be incurred to the HOAs or to the property owners are pretty substantial, especially if it's not taken care of upfront and it's not properly managed and the team itself is not living up to the expectations of the city, for example. Personally, I was a, the president of my HOA for a number of years. We didn't have a detention pond that we had to deal with. However, if we did, it was, there were questions I was prepared to answer. There are, there is potential development behind our property that belongs to Oakland University that we had, do have some concerns about. Should they do some development there? And it's something that I have my eye on keenly each and every day. Thank you.
Mr. Skelsey.
Yeah, where I live, there is no HOA. We do have reservoirs that are in our, our subdivision on, on my street. I have one in front of my house. We've never had a flooding problem. I guess we're just one of those lucky streets that just don't have to deal with that. With that being said, I mean, I'm open to listening to anybody that's having an issue with that. And if they have to absorb the cost for that, where does it become the cost of the HOA as it is for the city to be responsible for that? That's, like I said, I don't have an HOA and I don't deal with flooding. I don't have that issue. So, but again, it's another subject I would want to have to, or I would have to learn more about.
We'll start with Ms. Menino on this one. What policies or administration areas would you change in the city of Rochester Hills?
That's a good question. I've been spending a lot of time going through the 2026 budget, talking with some of the directors. Right now, nothing is coming to mind that there's, that is such a substantial issue that we need to make a change immediately. I was, would be open to listening to other suggestions from council members and/or citizens, but at this point, I don't, can't think of anything that comes to mind that I would want to make a change on. From what I've seen, the city has a very robust process in terms of the way that they're doing strategic planning, the way that they're doing their budgets, the way that they're attracting business. I've been very impressed so far going through, and right now, I don't have any suggestions for changes for them.
Mr. Galloway.
All right, well, I want to be very clear on this. For those of you who haven't paid attention, Rochester Hills is a fantastic community to live within. And the leadership that this city has, has, we, our, our budget has bounced, we, debt-free, as the mayor here recently mentioned, we're one of the, the only city in the state of Michigan. That is unheard of. That's fantastic. So clearly, something is being done right. In my attempt to get here on city council, I am not here looking to reinvent the wheel. There, I, I don't see a lot of broken things that need to be looked at. However, coming from the industry that I come out of and seeing what has been going on in the city in terms of the redevelopment and the construction side of it and what's being done, the, what I, from my industry, would reflect back is, in terms of policy, I definitely want to dive into looking at how inspections are handled. What is the turnaround time on getting these permits pulled? And, you know, that's where I will focus my efforts. Thank you.
Mr. Skelsey.
I think the biggest policy change is I would like to see the council come up with some kind of group or administration that is handling these union issues when it comes to these nurses, for example, or the firefighters. For them to say, hands off, they're a private company. Yeah, they may be a private company, but you do have leverage when you are the governing body of Rochester Hills. And they need to really look into that more and not leave these union workers, these nurses, out to dry like that. You know, they can be very supportive, but I think they can be, also become more involved. And that's where I see the biggest policy and administration change can take place.
Mr. Donovan.
I think Rochester Hills is a pretty well-run city. My friend, Mr. Galloway, did I pronounce that right? Galloway? I think he said it quite well. We're the only debt-free city in the state, as our mayor said before. You know, the quality of life here is evidence enough of how well-run the city is in general. I don't think we need a ton of administrative changes. I tell people when I'm knocking doors that I'm not looking to make waves, I'm looking to make a few splashes. I think the biggest change that we need to make at this level, though, is to invite more people to come up here with us. I mentioned in my intro that my district has gone, if it weren't for me, we'd go 16 years without a second name on the ballot. We've been really lucky that the people who have won by default in our city have been competent professionals. We shouldn't take that risk anymore. I want to create a municipal academy to invite people from all over the county to learn how good cities are well-run and why. I want to reach out to our universities to create buy-in with students and get people to run for city council instead of leave. Thank you.
Start with Mr. Galloway this time, in a similar question. What is one of the biggest challenges facing Rochester Hills?
I would argue one of the biggest challenges, you know, having run the HOA would come really on the communication side of it. And what I mean by that is, one, as a leader in my HOA, one of my biggest complaints was with regards to traffic control. Anytime a project was done, I, as a leader within my own subdivision, we, we didn't really know what was coming. And, and one morning, we would just wake up and there'd be a line of cars that waves was pushing through our subdivision and there wasn't a whole lot of direction as to, how are we going to deal with that? And everything from buses to folks leaving their homes, trying to get out. So I would openly recommend that we find a better way to communicate with individuals and their HOAs with that regard.
Thank you. Mr. Skelsey.
When I looked at the Rochester Hills master plan, Ben kind of hit the nail on the head. Transportation is one of the biggest issues that kept coming up when they were speaking with the residents that were involved with that master plan. I would like to see, not that it's a challenge, but I think it's an opportunity for them to make this a walk, biking-friendly community. I mean, we're, we're getting there. I mean, our, our sidewalks are, are phenomenal, except when they're not always plowed all the way, which has happened in our subdivision. You know, kids are walking to school and they have to climb over a mound of snow to get to the high school because they just stopped plowing at a certain, certain point. So I think transportation is the biggest challenge. And that also comes with more people moving into the area and development. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Donovan.
I'd like to echo transport as a priority. I think more bus routes would be great. I live right behind the 492 route and it made me so happy to see that bus line go through. I love public transportation. But I'd also like to point out that I think one of the biggest challenges that our city faces is a lack of challenge to leadership. When I made that program to support survivors of sexual assault, there were a bunch of people who challenged me on it, right? And because of those challenges, I was able to go through and do some really minute things that made it a lot better. I made it so the disbursements of the funds for it didn't out-people the survivors, that it didn't go against the limit they could receive in financial aid, a, a bunch of little things that would help. Being challenged made my policy better, and I'm really proud to have worked with the people challenging me to do that. Meanwhile, our mayor, I was appalled just last week at his state of the state, when he felt so comfortable with city council doing his whim that he could call them all flying monkeys. It's appalling. We need healthy challenge here. We need people who are willing to be more than a flying monkey. Thank you.
Ms. Menino.
I'm sorry, here. Yes, so I've taken the opportunity to really go through and study the 2026 budget for Rochester Hills. And I do see some, I would say, challenges, headwinds that we really need to, to keep our eyes on. Number one, there has been a significant increase in some of the operational costs of the city. And I'm talking about the police services, specifically in this case, that required a mileage increase recently. This is something that, services that were purchasing from Oakland County that were basically forced on us. I know it was unexpected back in 2024. But again, we're taking on significant cost increases for police, for water, for sewer. We've got inflation that we're dealing with. We have a lot of headwinds. And yes, it's great, we're debt-free right now. But if you really take a look at our strategic plan going out three years, you'll see that there possibly is a shift in, all of a sudden, okay, now we're going negative, we may need to go into debt, we need to look at opportunities to mitigate these costs and the operational cost of running the city.
We'll start with this next question with Mr. Skelsey. Are you aware of the time commitment for city council? How many hours are you planning to spend supporting city activities?
Yes, I know there are a lot of hours that are involved with this. And to be effective and to be out there for the public, you need to make those sacrifices. There's no getting around that. I mean, you don't take on a challenge of getting into a position like this just willy-nilly. I mean, you know that there's going to be a lot of time involvement, not just sitting up here, but reading through the prior report to this, looking at everything else, and then also just going to events to represent, you know, the city itself, especially at large, would be representing the entire area. So, and then not just one district. So yes, do I know there's a huge time commitment? Absolutely. But I'm up to the challenge. I'm, that's why I'm doing this. I want to give back to my community. And time is precious, but I'm willing to give it back so we can have effective government.
I'm going to add about 30 seconds for each of your time, including Mr. Skelsey. And what commitment, if any, will you make to getting trained for this position?
Well, being a former teacher, I did a lot of training, always before the school year started. So I know that some of this training can take sometimes a weekend, it can take a week, it depends what I guess is involved. But yes, I'm willing, to be an effective leader, to be an effective councilperson, I'm willing to do what it takes training-wise, because I know I'm, I have to learn how this all goes down. So, thank you.
Okay, so a minute and a half, please, on the timer. And Mr. Donovan.
Yeah, of course. It's an incredible time commitment. It's not just a city council meeting every other week. You've got committee meetings, public outreach, events. And it's hard to know in one given week how many hours you'll put in, but I know it's way more than the two or three every other week you see on the YouTube channel. I, I've gone through the last three years' worth of city council meetings and watched I've gone through the last three years' worth of city council meetings and watched them all. And I know the hard work that our councilmen, some of whom are sitting right here, put in. Thanks, by the way, you guys are doing great. So I know a lot goes into it. I'm willing to put that in. During my introduction, I mentioned that I came here after a brief stint of homelessness. Rochester Hills is a city that welcomed me when nowhere else would, and I tried a lot of places. Running for office is my way of returning the investment this city has already made in me. There is no amount of time I could spend that would be too much serving you. I mean that from the bottom of my heart. I know a politician will say just about anything to get a vote, but that's not what this is. This is my way of saying thank you. If I can commit time to make that happen, I will, without getting fired, I guess, I got to keep my, like, main job. Thank you.
Ms. Menino.
Yes, I'm fully prepared to make whatever time commitment is necessary. I understand there's specific regularly scheduled meetings, but I know for a fact that the council members spend a lot more time than that offline. My, I think that there's a lot of time that needs to be spent in preparation and reviewing the material for the meetings. It's important that the council members are coming and prepared, and a lot of the questions and a lot of the work actually is done outside of the meeting. I understand that. I understand how that works. And I'm the type of person, I like to drill into details, I like to look at things, I like to ask a lot of questions, and I know that's going to take a lot of time, but I know that going in, I know how it's going to work. The other thing that's not discussed as much and takes time will be the extracurricular activities. When you take on a city council position, you're representing the government, you need to be at events, you need to be showing up for the citizens, you need to go to ribbon-cutting ceremonies, you need to go to charity functions. It's, it's, it's not just the meetings, it's not just the preparation, it's also at night, at events, doing things. It's a, it's a full-on commitment. And yes, I understand it doesn't pay a lot, but that's, I'm, that's what I'm signing up for, and that's why I'm stepping into public service to serve the people.
Mr. Galloway.
Ditto. All right. As a father of three and, and in, in working in the business world, we, our, our time is very precious, time is very valuable. That being said, I'm well-aware of the time commitment that's put in. I've had some fantastic mentors, some of whom are sitting in the room tonight, who have walked through what kind of time commitment there is, and being the public face of city council, and where we can and can't be, where we should and shouldn't be. That being said, the same question was asked of me a number of years ago, sitting at a event where the mayor, who's our current mayor, asked me if I'd be interested in serving the city as a fireman. And I said, well, what kind of time commitment is that? And he says, when your pager goes off. And I said, okay. Now, in terms of training, then the following year, I went through Fire One and Two and EMS Academy, and then I spent the next number of years serving this community. Every time it went off at 3:00 in the morning, I sped my way and I got there. My wife tolerated it, and she was very excited when we got rid of the pager program. That being said, the first thing I'll do is I'll institute a 28-hour workday and try to figure out how to squeeze all this in. That being said, I am definitely committed to both learning and participating and giving back to the community, and however I can do that, I absolutely will. Thank you.
Next question, we'll start with Mr. Donovan. With almost 20% foreign-born population in Rochester Hills, what is your opinion of ICE entering cities masked and taking individuals in our community?
Oh, strongly opposed. And anyone who says otherwise, you know, I have some strong words for them. Simple fact, immigrants, documented or not, commit fewer crime than American-born citizens. Immigrants, documented or not, create more jobs than they take when they come in. These are facts. We have the numbers, it's proven. There are some studies, though they are disputed, to be fair, that suggest that they put more into the economy than they take out. Like, they're good for our community. There's no reason to eject them. 20% of our population, you said, right, was, is foreign-born? And Rochester Hills is one of the best cities in America. This is not a hard question. Why are we letting people take our neighbors away? Why are we letting people violate our communities this way? These are our friends, these are our neighbors. These are part of a family that we get to choose, it's part of the family that chose me five years ago. We have no business telling them they're not welcome here. I have no business telling anyone they're not welcome here. These people are family. We should treat them like it. ICE has no place here. They are the ones who are unwelcome, and I will tell any jackbooted thug that to their face.
I just want to confirm, we're doing one minute? Thank you. Ms. Menino.
Yes, well, I did see the statistics on 20% foreign-born, and I don't believe 20% are illegal immigrants, so I just want to be clear on that. From my perspective, I'm following the law. And if ICE comes here and there's somebody, for whatever reason, I understand they're targeting the criminals right now, but we need to follow the law. If a person's here illegally, I mean, they shouldn't have came here illegally. We, we need to follow the law and the federal government. I am not going to be, get on city council and start breaking laws, because that's exactly what that would be. That's my stance. I'm following the law. If we don't like the laws, then we need to change them.
Mr. Galloway.
All right. Well, my wife actually represents some of this population. She was born in South Korea and came over as a child and was born, not born, but raised here in Rochester Hills, and this community welcomed her with open arms. My children are also welcomed with open arms. And I've never been to a community, I've lived all across this country, where there was so much diversity. Now, that being said, I, I, I find the jackbooted thugs comment a bit reprehensible. Working in the, you know, working with the police and fire in this community, I, there's many, many fantastic individuals, and I believe that that's going to be at the local, the state, and the federal level. I don't believe any of these individuals are putting on masks to come in and rob our neighbors. I don't believe that a bit. I, hopefully, that's not getting brought to the city council, that kind of mentality. That being said, I also believe in immigration. I believe we need that in our workforce. I believe if you come here legally, I 100% endorse that. Thank you.
Ms. Skelsey.
When I hear a question like that, the word, the phrase that comes to mind to me is slippery slope. Let's start with ICE coming in to a population that's legal, that there's no reason for ICE to be here. Well, guess what? Ah, you know what? Let's send in the National Guard now, because there could be other problems. This is coming from the federal government. And once you start going down that slippery slope, it's really about intimidation. Let's bring these people in. We will intimidate them. Oh, first, it's, oh, you're a criminal? And you're a foreigner, and you don't belong here? Next thing I know, Mark, you're a Democrat? Well, you, we can't have Democrats in Rochester Hill, it just can't happen. And that's how this all starts. I wish people would pick up a history book and see how things went in Germany, and they would understand why I'm not paranoid, I am extremely concerned about where things are going with our federal government, but I think that also trickles down to the local government at this level.
Next question.
Howard, can you clarify that last question for me? Because everybody seemed to be answering differently. We're talking about illegal, right?
Well, that's only if you operate under the assumption that ICE only deport illegals.
Sir, sir, please. We're going to move on to the next question.
Okay.
We're going to bring it a little more local here. We'll start with Ms. Menino. Are we spending too much or too little on roads? And what is your priority for addressing roads for Rochester Hills as opposed to things going on in Lansing?
That's a good question. I don't know if we're spending too much or too little. We need to be spending enough, and we need to be properly allocating funds for new road repair and also to address the safety issues that we have in some of these roads and subdivisions, and also the congestion. And I'm thinking in particular of Adams Road, I know that that's a hot topic. I am for, once, if I elected to city council, I'm looking forward to seeing a lot of these traffic studies that are being done. I know we're spending a lot of money for studies with consultants, and there has to be solutions to alleviate some of these congested roads, in terms Adams in particular. Maybe there could be options where we don't need to do a full tear-up, we can widen some spots, but just alleviate the traffic flow. I want to make sure that the roads are properly being maintained. I think it is a safety hazard in some cases where we're not seeing the maintenance in the potholes. And I know that the director has a good plan for doing a rotation and doing the road repairs, and I'd like to see that continued and properly funded.
Mr. Galloway.
I would absolutely love to see these damn roads fixed. If you've been around the state of Michigan, you would, you know, as much as you may think that our roads are atrocious, if you've been elsewhere in our state, you would find out rather quickly that our roads are not that bad at all. That being said, the money that gets allocated to fix them is something that city council should absolutely be on top of, it should be a priority. The roads, the sidewalks, the infrastructure in general, and that, you know, this is an area that I'm infinitely passionate about, is how we can safely get our families through our community, how they can get, kids can get to bus stops, how pedestrians can get from one sidewalk to another when there's gaps in our sidewalks. These are all areas that should, and will be addressed. That being said, we are, hands down, better than the vast majority of the state of Michigan. Very much look forward to getting involved with this area and how we can help out.
Ms. Skelsey.
I think that it goes back again to the master plan, that when citizens were asked, what was the number-one issue, and it goes back to traffic and transportation. Is it a pain to be interrupted by these crazy orange cones and delineators? Yes. But being patient and understanding to the situation will allow us to have better roads. Where do people want to move into? Where there's better roads. It helps our economy. Yes, you have to put money out in order to get money back in. So to me, utilizing the traffic studies is huge. You know, you want to look at it and understand that, you know, this is a green light project, or hey, you know what? Like, like Diana said, maybe Adams doesn't have to be a total tear-out, maybe there's an alternative way to do it. So, too much or too little? Again, you got to go back to the traffic studies to, to see what's really being effective.
Mr. Donovan.
Yeah, like I said, I've watched, you know, the last three years of these videos happen, I've watched the planning happen, I, I've seen the, the development get talked about, get agreed to, get implemented, get done, and the wonderful results of it. Everybody hates road construction up until the point that it's done, right? I, I think in general, we're doing a pretty good job. I am a little bit concerned about, oh gosh, I forget the company name off the top of my head, but the company working on Brewster, we just had to sign a check for, I think, $250,000 extra dollars because they made a mistake. And, you know, an honest mistake can happen sometimes, that's, that's all right, but those folks are on thin ice, as far as I'm concerned. They don't get another one of those. So, yeah, I, I think the amount we spend should be based on our need. I think we're meeting those needs pretty well. The thing I'm concerned about is the fact that gas tax revenue is falling and will be as EVs take over more of the roads, and gas taxes is where we get the money for that. I'd love a chance to talk more about the plan, I have to help replace that funding. Thanks.
Next question, we'll start with Mr. Galloway. And earlier, we talked about hours you were committing going forward. This one, we're going to look a little bit in the rearview mirror. How many meetings have you attended of the council, either in person or online? And how have you prepared for this position? Mr. Galloway.
Over the years, I've attended any number of city council meetings, truth be told. I, I haven't counted each and every one of them, I've watched any number online as well. To be honest with you, most of the meetings have been geared towards something that was specifically going to be addressed that given evening. I have spent the last four years, for example, on the Dear Management Committee, so there, there are topics that come up for the city that I, I feel more inclined to pay more attention to. I've been coming to the last several meetings, just so that when there is the vote, and if I do get elected, God willing, to city council, that there will be a smooth transition, because I'm up to speed on what is the current events going on. That being said, my ear has always been to the ground, to the wall, paying attention, you know, because that, being on the HOA, it's, you know, that information is something I would take back to my HOA meetings and, you know, present on what kind of green space events are going on, or what kind of Dear Management events were going on. Thank you.
Mr. Skelsey.
Honestly, I had no reason to go to any city council meetings, I'm almost a little embarrassed to say that. Never had an issue, never had to go to the city for anything exceptional, and the city never, has never knocked on my door to say, your grass is too high, this is too much, whatever. So was there a motivation to go? No, because it just wasn't, I had no need. Now, I have gone to one, when the firefighters were here, talking about the contract, and I have now, like Max, have gone and started to look back at other meetings that have taken place in the past. So have I gone to a lot, honestly? No. Again, really didn't have a reason to, but I guess that's one of the things I want to change now that I'm running for city council.
Mr. Donovan.
Yeah, in terms of preparation, I mean, I have a bachelor's in political science, a minor's in economics. I've watched the last three years of city council meetings, and I've shown up in person to a few of them, I haven't kept track how many. Notably, I was the only person at this table to speak on behalf of the firefighters' union when they were begging the city council to, to come to an agreement instead of going to arbitration. I was the only one up there speaking on their behalf, because they asked citizens to, and I came up and did that, because I believe in supporting our heroes. Our city council does a great job making sure our fire department is really well-stocked, but they, they didn't realize that fire departments aren't heroes, they're just where heroes work, and you need to pay them too. But, yeah, I mean, as I said, I've, I've watched three years' worth of meetings, I've done the government thing myself, I've put together budgets of seven figures or more, no, just seven figures, I shouldn't say or more. But I've, I've already put in this work, I'll be happy to do it again.
Ms. Menino.
Yes, in response to the meetings, I attend in person. I've been attending in person, I, I think I've only missed a couple of meetings since the beginning of this year, when I decided that I wanted to go and be on the city council. So I do attend regularly, I attend in person. I do speak with a lot of the city council members offline, I speak with the mayor, talk about issues. I have taken the opportunity to schedule meetings with some of the key directors in the organization, the, the government, to go through their issues. I also took the opportunity to, to attend the budget workshop, the working session, and I've read and went through all 263 pages of the 2026 budget, because I want to prepare, if I'm appointed city council, I want to be ready day one in understanding what's going on in the city.
The next question, we'll start with Mr. Skelsey. What are your thoughts on the water and sewer rates? Are we paying too much? Are increases appropriate?
Water and sewer rates? I live on a well, so my water is free, except for the electricity that pays for the pump. The only thing I do pay for is sewage, because I am connected to the sewer lines, I don't have a septic field in my property, so I do pay for that. With that being said, I don't keep on top of what people are paying for water, because there's probably at least eight houses on our street that still pull from a well. So no one is talking about, no one is complaining about how high the water prices are. Now, I'm going to assume, which could be deadly, that like everything else, these prices are going up. So at some point, you have to ask, why do these prices go up and what's involved with it? Are they just jacking up utilities to, to jack it up to get more money, or is there a reason behind that?
Mr. Donovan.
Almost everything that happens in local government happens for a reason. These prices are where they are, because it's really expensive to run this stuff. I want to bring those prices down. I think one of the only real problems Rochester Hills has as a city writ large is the fact that it's really hard to afford to live here. I think bringing down those prices should, is something we should be working towards. I don't think lowering them arbitrarily is the way to do it, because we have to make ends meet. I think helping our HOAs in our neighborhoods install smarter sprinkler systems, I think easing some of our zoning ordinances on just how green the law needs to be, that's a bit of an exaggeration, there aren't ordinances about the tint of green, would be a good idea, so that we're using a little bit less water and being smarter about our consumption as a, as a community to lower those rates. But I, I don't think that just arbitrarily saying we need But I, I don't think that just arbitrarily saying we need to bring down prices will actually make the city a better place unless we have a plan to do it.
Ms. Menino.
Yeah, so, yes, we have seen very recent increases in the mileage rate specifically for the water and sewer. And then we buy those services, right? It's not something that's generated in Rochester Hills. We're basically being charged. So whether or not it's competitive with other cities, I don't know. I would like to see that information actually and look into that and do benchmarks as to what we're paying versus what other cities are paying, and if there's any opportunity that we can lower rates based on what other cities are doing. This is something, as I had mentioned, that's one of the headwinds for the city are these operational costs that keep going up and that we need to look at solutions to keep them under control so we don't have to keep raising tax rates. That would be my goal and my commitment to, to get into the details and understand the situation on why these costs are going up and how we can mitigate it.
Mr. Galloway.
Well, having had the privilege of living all over the place, I, coming here to Rochester Hills, I had anticipated to be spending what I'm spending on my services. That being said, I would love to sit here and tell everyone that we're going to fight to lower everyone's prices, but, you know, that's not always the reality. As, you know, as many of you have noticed, we've spent a lot of money on the infrastructure, putting in new water lines and doing a lot of these things that are long-term fixes and for our city and, you know, give us that longevity. You know, we've had some aging water lines that any number of my residents of my subdivision have had issues with over the years, and we watch them come through and replace all of them. I, I don't have any of my residents, you know, screaming from the mountaintop that they're, they're paying way too much for their resources. And I think as a community, I'm very grateful for all the work that has been going into ensuring that we have long-term operational abilities here in our community. Thank you.
We have a few more questions left before we get to closing statements. We'll start with Mr. Donovan. And I'm going to read this question, and hopefully it, you, you can have some background in terms of what this means. What are the, what are your views on the actions the county took with respect to the Oakland County Sheriff's Department? And Mr. Donovan.
Yeah, so I, I am not an enormous fan of the choice they made to raise our mileage rates. We are very fortunate to have the second highest, or lowest, excuse me, tax rate in the county of, of all cities. I, I think we're, we're very lucky for that. It's a product of really good management, and to have to raise those rates to finance more officers, I think, is a problem. I have to wonder if the right move was actually raising the mileage rates to, to hire those officers, though. I mean, we, we've, crime has gone down year after year after year, and we've hired officers year after year after year. And at some point, I have to wonder if we reach a point of diminishing returns. I think if the county is trying to twist our arm into paying for their mistakes, which the, the council said is what they believe, the answer to that is not to pay for their mistakes. Now, to be clear, this isn't about defunding the police or anything. I want our community to be safe, and the police play a vital role in that. It's about acknowledging that we've hit diminishing returns. If we want to budget responsibly, this is something we should look at earnestly and honestly. I don't think that's too outlandish.
Ms. Menino.
Yeah, well, my, my understanding of the situation is that back in December of 2024, that the Oakland County Commissioners came and basically forced on a significant price increase for the services of the Oakland County Sheriff. I think it was 70, 17% increase for '25 and then six year after year after that. This was something that was not budgeted for in the 2025 budget, and we basically had to absorb. There were options looked, over the three-year period, it's actually close to a $4 million increase in the services for the, for the city. We looked at different options to try to mitigate that, but there, in the end, we could not do and did not want to do any reduction in the service level of the police. That was just not the right decision for the city. So in the end, the mileage had to be increased in order to maintain the same level of service. This is something that, as part of city council, I would want to go in, and this plus other issues with the Oakland County charges that keep coming into the city that in some cases are not justified or they're not being transparent on why there was such a significant cost increase for no service level change.
Thank you.
That's the issue.
Thank you. Mr. Galloway.
All right. Was I appreciative of the fact that the rate went up for the Oakland County Sheriff's Department? Absolutely not. I don't think there's going to be anyone in this community that raises their hand and says they're glad they're, we're paying more for it. That being said, none of those people would complain when they call 911 if those deputies show up. All right. To my gentleman's point over here, he made a comment that, you know, we're hiring more officers and crime is going down. I think there's a direct correlation in that. And, you know, any, any prompts to want to defund the police, I think, would just be, would be absurd in today's day and age. Now, that being said, as safe as Rochester is and this beautiful community that we live in are, we are not oblivious to things that can happen in our community, from a splash pad shooting to someone being murdered by someone knocking on the door in the middle of the night. You know, we, there's certain things you have to have, and having that law enforcement presence is there. When you've seen the choppers go flying over our head, you know, there's expense to be paid for those helicopters and that night vision and all those resources that come to pay. And I'll tell you what, when you, when you do call 911, if in, you know, in fact, something does happen, you know, the last thing on your mind is, am I paying too much for them to show up right now? Now, I think absolutely we should go to the table and look at, you know, how much we are paying and have those conversations, and that's something that we can do as a, as a council. Thank you.
Mr. Skelsey.
Yeah, public safety is number one. I mean, you're not going to move to a community if you don't feel safe. Okay? With that being said, when I hear 17% increase, I think of price gouging is exactly what I think of. Now, to be forced into that situation by the county makes me wonder, well, what was the county looking at? Did the county look at our budget and said, hey, Rochester can afford this? They're, they're doing great. So more has to go into this. I'm, I'm not going to say it's a conspiracy theory or anything, but when I, when I hear something like this and see something like this, it's concerning that the county is putting this type of pressure on our community. And, you know, public safety is number one, but you know what? It also has to be reasonable, too.
This will be our last question before we move to closing comments and statements. We'll start with Ms. Menino. What are your thoughts on changing the zoning and allowing high-density housing?
Well, I think any proposal can be brought forward, and all proposals need to be looked at, but any decisions on new development going into the city needs to be also considered with the character of the city and also the surrounding neighborhoods and the values of the taxes, tax base that's in that neighborhood. I would not be for any type of construction that would devalue properties of existing homeowners that are paying taxes. But at the same time, I do understand that there's, you know, I was going to say a shortage of housing, and in fact, we call it affordable housing in the community, especially for our seniors. The seniors that, you know, may be living in the city today in bigger houses and want to downsize, and then the youth, right? The, the young families that want to come in here and move into Rochester Hills. So absolutely looking at all proposals, but not at the expense of devaluing the homes in that same neighborhood and also making sure that the construction would be in character with the city.
Mr. Galloway.
All right. Well, this is in fact what I do for a living. I, I develop and build high-density housing all over the state of Michigan, senior housing, affordable, affordable living housing, market rate housing. This is, this is what I do. Now, one of the things that I spend a great amount of time doing is dealing with city councils and presenting and in finding out from this council, you know, what are the expectations and the desires of the community? In many cases, we're being called on from the council to come in and make presentations and how, you know, how can we benefit the community and what areas can we do that? That being said, I absolutely agree that any kind of project needs to be looked at by the city planners, by the council. Is this going to be in architecture? Is this going to be something that's going to be a net benefit, net positive to the community? How's it going to affect traffic? There's a great deal of time, effort, energy that goes into these type of projects, but in the end, we're, we're bringing in, though, you know, this bringing in families, this bringing in tax bases, bringing in employees. It's, you're, if your community's not growing, and this, today's day and age, it's dying. You, you need to bring in and facilitate families, whether it be through busing or if it's through having places that are affordable to live, 100%.
Mr. Skelsey.
Yeah, changing zoning for high-density housing, you know, it's like, you, again, you can't just jump into that. I would want to see studies. To me, the biggest thing goes back to my stance on green spaces. How is this going to affect the environment where they want to put these buildings? Okay? So to me, yes, housing is important. My kids are adults, okay? They're looking for housing in Rochester Hills, affordable housing. It's very, very hard to find, okay? But on the other hand, I don't want to see a bunch of complexes go in, or apartment complexes go in that take up a space that really was a wetland, a, you know, a green space, just to get more people into the city. I mean, yes, there's a, a right way to do it and a wrong way to do it. And, you know, investigating how this housing affects the environment around it, to me, would be the number one issue.
Mr. Donovan.
Yeah, you might be surprised. I have some really strong feelings about affordable housing. With that said, I've already promised, right? I'm going to judge any development that is proposed in our city on its merits. My own personal feelings will have very little to do with whether I believe it is good for the city as a whole. I believe that Rochester Hills can tweak zoning for higher-density housing without creating high-density housing, right? I think more leeway for en suite apartments, more spaces for in-law suites. I think creating, allowing space for like little tiny homes in someone's backyard, things like that, higher density that will allow people to come in, create a, a rent base, and increase property values will allow more affordable housing without harming us the way people think of when they say that. I also think that people who come in to develop should be required to have some proportion of that development as affordable housing if they want to play ball here. I think that's, I, I think that's the neighborly thing. Thank you.
That concludes the time for questions. The candidates will now be given the opportunity to have a one-minute closing statement in reverse order of the opening statements. We'll begin with Ms. Menino.
Yes, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out this evening. And as we close, I just want to reaffirm why I'm running for city council. I'm doing it because I care about the city and I want it to keep it a place where families can live and work and raise a family. I understand the job responsibilities of the city council member, and I am qualified to do this job effectively. What I will do for you as a citizen is ensure that your voice is heard and that I am always in, working in your best interest. My approach to working with the local government would be a collaborative one, but my working style is that I do like to get into details and I like to challenge. This is how we get to better answers for the city. Please check out my Facebook page. I have a candidate Facebook page. I am being endorsed by all seven city council members, the Greater Metropolitan Realtors Association, and Mayor Barnett. Thank you for coming out tonight, and I appreciate your time.
Mr. Donovan.
I think today, we've been presented with a really important choice. Every person up here is a skilled, competent professional. Every person up here brings their own skill sets to the table. If I'm being frank, I think Ms. Menino would be better at me, at things like logistics and acquisitions. You're just good at that, Omi. But I'm the only one up here who has brought a new idea to the table. I'm the only one who suggested solar carports, municipal leadership programs, who's, who suggested en suites for, for housing, right? The choice we have today is more of the same, which has been great, or more of the same with new ideas from new leadership. The choice we have today is, is from someone who has come here because politics is really something they're passionate about, and it matters to them, and they, they want to be involved in the community, and someone who is here to give back to a community that has given him his life back. I hope that the citizens in District One choose a candidate who has brought sincerity, emotional honesty, and ideas to the table. I think that, that cooperation through challenge is important, and I hope you choose that. Thank you.
Ms. Skelsey.
First of all, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for giving us this opportunity to come up here and let the community know more about ourselves. After being up here with these four individuals, I'm like, they're all qualified, and they're, we're, you know, they're, they're ready to go. I mean, I'm impressed with the, the people, this panel that's sitting up here. I want to put people before politics. This is a nonpartisan position, you know? If me and Ben are neighbors and the water main breaks, we don't care if you're a Democrat or a Republican. We care about getting the water main fixed. Okay? So that's how I'm approaching this job, is I, when I elect it, I will be there for everybody. Doesn't matter if it's a D, an R, red or blue. You're a Rochester Hills resident, and I am here to represent you all the way through. So very excited about it, and, you know, I love the opportunity. Every day I do this campaign, I'm learning something new, and I hope to get your vote in November. Thank you.
Mr. Galloway.
And also like to thank Legal Women Voters for having us here this evening. It's, it's fantastic opportunity for us to not only meet who our opponents are, but also put our faces in front of the community. And I, if there's no other takeaways, that's what I'm here to do as an at-large candidate. I'm here to represent the entire city of Rochester Hills, and that is an entire microcosm of different ideals, I had different, you know, different beliefs, different backgrounds, different nationalities, everything in between. And there, there are going to be passionate differences. You know, our, our role up here on city council, and my belief is to, you know, be the eyes and ears of the people in our community and take on the challenge of, you know, how can we affect change, whether it's through building or if it's through safety? You know, these are what we are here to do. We know, we are absolutely, all of us are allocating our time, absolutely, you know, allocating our resources, giving back. And, you know, if there's nothing else to be said about me, that's what I, I know, I'm passionate about doing is giving back to my community. As far as what political party we're on, you know, here at city council through these, you know, various conversations, that doesn't really come up. On the fire department, no one ever asks me what party did I represent? But I do anticipate and pledge that I will give back 100% to this community and any challenge that it presents to me on this council. Thank you.
The Legal Women Voters would like to thank the audience, the candidates, the city of Rochester Hills, and Rochester Hills Television for making this forum possible. This presentation is copyrighted 2025 by the Legal Women Voters. All rights reserved. Any recording may be shown in its entirety. For more nonpartisan information on these candidates, please visit vote411.org. Re-broadcast times of this forum will be on the Legal Women Voters website. The Legal Women Voters is funded by contributions from concerned businesses and citizens. Our membership is open to women and men over the age of 16. Remember, absentee ballots are now available. Early voting begins October 25th, and you can vote, or you can vote in your precinct on November 4th. And remember, democracy is not a spectator sport. Thank you very much.